If you call the roll, Madam Clerk, I'll get into the regular agenda, our regular panel, when we get to our regular meeting.
Councilmember Chase Williams, District One.
Present.
Councilmember Iyer, District Two.
Here.
Councilmember Madison, District Three.
Here.
Councilmember Gavia, District Four.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just some quick opening remarks. This wonderful sound system that we have, it is, I ran sound at one of my former jobs when I was in law school for some rock and roll bands that went on the road. So this is a great system, I've checked it out. These are wonderful microphones, very unintrusive speakers, it's a Bose system. The Chamber of Commerce donated this to the city of Brookhaven. This is a very nice system so that all of you can hear. We've had problems with audio, people not hearing the past month or so, but this is, I think it's solved. Can you all hear me clearly? Everybody can hear this fine, that's wonderful. Great. So thank you, Brookhaven Chamber and Art Freeman, thank you so much. Okay, not to bring it down, but this is important, I was just told that our Senator Jim Tysinger, who served this area for many, many years, I grew up with, you know, putting up Jim Tysinger signs when I was a child, passed away this morning. So he had a good portion of Brookhaven in his district, and he actually was one of the councilmembers for the old city of North Atlanta that was part of this area back in the 50s and 60s that dissolved. But he's been here forever, he's mentored many of us who have been involved in DeKalb County and state politics. He served with my father, he was a great man, and I just will say a prayer for his wife, Loretta, if you would. It's very sad. We just had the Lincoln Day Dinner for the DeKalb Republican Party, and the table that I sat at was the Jim Tysinger Breakfast, because he held that breakfast every Saturday at DeKalb County GOP Headquarters, people from every party and every stripe to come and talk about what they thought was best for the community. So just, if you know him as Tysinger, if you express your condolences, we'd appreciate that. Thank you very much. All right, moving on, new business here. We have a, like I said, this is a kind of a truncated agenda, we'll get to our regular agenda, the pledge and invocation on that on our second meeting, our regular meeting. On the advice of our attorney, we're going to cancel the public hearing, wait until the zoning board appeals is seated, we're appointing the zoning board of appeals tonight. The public will be notified as required by law, and a hearing will be held the earliest possible date after our ZBA is seated and trained. So that's why we're canceling this meeting. Do we need a motion on that? Nope, just canceling it, okay. All right, so that meeting is canceled. I'll call the February 12, 2013, regular city council meeting to order with an invocation, if you'd please bow your heads. I hope the Father, we thank you for this occasion and time to meet to discuss the issues and business of our new city. We ask for your guidance, and we ask for your blessings upon everything that we do. In your name we pray, amen. All right, Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, yeah, please.
Councilmember Chase Williams, District One.
Still here.
Councilmember Iyer, District Two.
Here.
Councilmember Madison, District Three.
Here.
Councilmember Gavia, District Four.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. If you'd all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, last year right.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
My opening remarks, is this the section where we're going to do all these motions and, okay. All right, we have some changes to the agenda that we're going to vote on a little bit, because some things aren't ready to be done, and some things need to be considered further, and some things have been removed for other reasons. So if there's no objection, I'd like to move up the appointment of the boards and commissions and the judges and the hearing officer due to the lengthy agenda. So if there's any objection to that, let me know, but I'd like to move all the folks that we have here tonight to be appointed to have them move up on the agenda.
The items are, there'll be item number 16 and 17.
Is there a motion?
I move, uh...
Before, pardon, ma'am, I was interrupting, but if we could, I have the staff that asked if you further amended the agenda.
Oh, okay, yes, we'd like to amend the agenda, we'd like to move some things in the agenda and amend the agenda, so if your staff does have some recommendations there, we'd like to hear those now.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, we'd ask that you table the one read ordinance, and number two, the new business, that's on chapter 18. We'd ask you to table number four, the new business, that's the one read ordinance on chapter 15, business regulations. We'd ask that you remove item number 11, and we would ask that you remove item number 13.
Is there most of the other changes to the agenda besides those? Is there a motion based on the recommendation of staff?
I'll move to amend the agenda pursuant to Mr. Riley's report and the mayor's request.
I have a second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting a motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the agenda's been amended, moved. So we're, minutes. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have the January 8 regular council meeting minutes, January 14 special call meeting minutes, and January 15, the public hearing meeting minutes, January 15, the public hearing meeting minutes, and January 22, the regular council meeting minutes. All these minutes are in agenda packet and have been sent to Mayor and Council.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm pleased that we approved the minutes, dislisted by our staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk, please enter to the minutes, the minutes have been adopted. Okay, this is the section where we're going to bring in the appointments to the various boards and commissions and judges for the city of Brookhaven. We have a zoning board of appeals, which is a board that will hear all requests for variances and things of that nature that are generated in the city of Brookhaven. They will actually make the decisions on variances and things of that nature, and they're empowered to do so. Any other comments about what the ZBA does? Rebecca Chase, maybe you want to discuss the importance of that a little bit? Because you have served on such a board at DeKalb County.
I did, I served for several years on the DeKalb Zoning Board of Appeals, and this is an important board that is a quasi judicial board. It hears cases of zoning variances and administrative appeals. Its word is in fact, not necessarily the final word, but it has the effect of code. It can be appealed to the Superior Court, but what I found is that these are cases of everything from people wanting to build a front porch and meeting the variance, or patio, or something in the backyard, to McDonald's on dirt hills ask for the variance, large apartment complexes, and other, you know, big commercial projects coming forward as well. So it's going to be great to have it centered in our city so that you can really be familiar with the properties, and it will, you know, involve our local citizenry, so it's all going to be good.
Thank you, Rebecca. And we also have a planning commission. Jim, if you want to discuss that a little bit about what the planning commission does, give everybody a chance to expound a little bit.
I've never been on the planning commission, but have played them on TV. The planning commission has the responsibility of reviewing the, a resentings, and those types of things are heard by the, or their application for resenting to the city of Brookhaven. The planning commission doesn't have quite the power that the Florida Zoning Appeals does, and their recommendations are just that, they make recommendations to the mayor and council. But the intent of the planning commission is, it's one step, it provides citizens the opportunity to provide input into resentings and things that affect things in their neighborhoods or in their areas. It also allows us to have sort of a second layer of review for zoning matters, and hopefully it will provide some insight into why or why not a particular case is appropriate for Mayor and Council to approve at the end of the day. So it's a board that will require a little bit of time, particularly getting used to and getting familiar with the projects as they come along. Also liking some of the neighbors, so the planning commission is the first step in the zoning process, a very important step, and hopefully it will help the council understand better how these projects may or may not fit into the context of the city of Brookhaven.
Thank you, Jim.
If I could just add something too, just to make sure that you know, both of these boards have opportunities for public comment on these properties, and so this is really an important way for you to have your voice heard on zoning matters and variances. And the great thing for us now is it's going to be so much more convenient if you've ever had to try to get to DeKalb County Courthouse in the middle of the day and take time off, take time off from work, or go to the seven o'clock, excuse me, planning commission meetings in rush hour traffic. I think it's going to be a great advantage to have it more accessible, and I encourage the citizens to be involved, as involved as you want to be.
We've also, thank you Rebecca and Jim for that, I didn't let them know they were going to be speaking on these things, but they did a great job, I would think, without prior notice, kind of sabotaged them there. There's, in DeKalb County, if you're familiar with the zoning process, there's also what's called a community council, which is something that we decided, Brookhaven we didn't need, because we are kind of our own community council. It's a step that you had taken in DeKalb County before you went to the, you know, the ZBA, and there, we felt it was a little superfluous at a time, to a schedule, somebody trying to get a variance or things of that nature. So we decided that we're local enough government, a small enough government, that we think that we don't need to have a community council. We have close representation with each council member, representing 12,000 people, more or less, and it's a city of 50,000, so this is what local government's all about. Now, we also have an alcohol board hearing officer. That is a kind of seemingly obscure type of position, but it's very, very important. This is a board that will be hearing any business or entity that has an alcohol license, that has been suspended or put in danger or terminated. They would come before this board to bring their argument as to why maybe that decision shouldn't take place. So it's a very important board, it doesn't meet that often, it doesn't come up that often, but it does come up, and it's a very important thing for our city to have. You've got a place that's notorious for serving minors, or people with licenses who are felons doing things, you know, financial transaction fraud, things of that nature. This is what this board is going to be put in place for, so it's, it sounds obscure, but it's actually a very important thing to have in your city, it's a very important position. So we're going to have one of those, and it's more than likely probably three to five members. But tonight, we're just appointing one member because we've got to do our due diligence on the other candidates. Now, we're also appointing tonight our judges. We're going to have a municipal court in the city of Brookhaven that will handle misdemeanors, which are offenses, traffic, and things of that nature, that where you can go to jail for up to a year. If you commit a crime in Brookhaven where you have to go to jail for more than a year, that's a felony and that has jurisdiction in the Superior Court of DeKalb County. So we're kind of similar to a state court in that we'll have jurisdiction over those misdemeanor issues and on code violations and code compliance issues. So our municipal court is very important. The two people we're appointing as judges, I know them very well, and they're very competent attorneys, and I'm excited about their willingness to serve, as well as I am for the other people we have got on this slate here. And right now, I'd like to go through some of that, just say a little bit about the process of how we found people willing to serve on a ZBA, on a planning commission, alcohol board, and on, for our judges. Part of the mayor's duties, the mayor has to appoint all these people, and there are a lot of positions to appoint in the city. So I took that job very seriously. I asked council for some suggestions for some people that they know who had certain abilities or lived in their neighborhoods, who they thought had, would be qualified to serve on some of these commissions or boards, and took their input, and took my own knowledge of the city, because as you know, I'm the only one up here that represents the city as a whole, so I have to, every decision I make has to be made with, is it best for Brookhaven? Not is it best for District One, Two, Three, or Four, or my neighborhood, or someone else's neighborhood, it's best for the city as a whole. So that was my job. And I've spoken to everyone on this list who's going to be appointed tonight, and that was one question I asked them, can you put any personal prejudices or biases aside that you may have and make decisions that are in the best interest of the citizens of Brookhaven? And they all said they could. So that's the criteria that I had, other than knowing a lot of them and knowing some of their backgrounds. We wanted some experts in the fields that they were, you know, for zoning, we wanted people who had a familiar with zoning law for planning, we wanted to have some developers who had a familiar area of planning, and we wanted some regular folks who didn't have much experience with any of that, so that we could have the opinion of just a normal citizen with a different type of profession, who can learn and be trained and understand how to make decisions that impact their neighbors and their city. So we have a good diverse mix of very strong candidates, I'm very happy with the makeup of our boards, have been very carefully considered. It was a very arduous process to get, you know, 17 or so people for tonight, we've got a few more to do on some other things later, but calling all these folks and getting their agreement to serve, and their willingness to serve, and talking to them, and frankly, vetting their backgrounds somewhat as well, that was also part of the process. Took a long time, it was a very intensive process, one that I took very seriously, and one that almost wore me out, frankly. It's very important, and that's why I wanted to spend so much time on it. So right now, I'd just like to announce the names of the people that we have chosen, that I've chosen, and that we've, through some discussion with council, have chosen to represent the city of Brookhaven on our board. So for the zoning board of appeals, we have, yeah, if you're here, not everybody's here tonight, I know that we're going to swear in as many of you as you can, but not everybody can make it, but if you're here, and I call your name, if you could please stand up and remain standing, I'd appreciate it. We have Tim Nama for the ZBA, for Chair of the ZBA, not here. Tori Self, Tori's not here. Hope Baucham, there we have Hope, thank you Hope, standing, stay there. Where's that baby? Okay. Glenn Byers, thank you Glenn. Don Bolia, don't. Kent Gibson, Kent called and said he couldn't make it, he had another family situation. And Jed Beardsley, there's Jed, thank you, you know Jed from his work on the Brookhaven Commission. All right, please remain standing. For planning commission, we have Stan Siegel, who's the Chair. All right. Shannon Camber, who's out of town. Jack Hodred, there's Jack, Jack's got a lot of experience in planning, and he's a great addition as well. All these people are great, I don't need to keep picking people out. Adrian Smith. John Funny, hi John, with Christ Consulting, he's got a lot of experience in planning things for cities. Rob Francore, hey Rob, thank you. And John Hess. All right. These are the folks for the ZBA and the planning commission, and for alcohol board, we have Joseph Patan, he is sick in bed right now. And for judge, we have Laura Stevenson and Jonathan Grenade. All right, thank you Jonathan. So please remain standing. I would, I'm proud to appoint this slate to all of these boards and commissions and these judges for the city of Brookhaven, and I would ask for a motion to affirm, confirm their appointments, on gross, which means as a whole. Is there any, anybody have a motion?
I may approve the zoning board of appeals, planning commission, alcohol board, and the judges as noted by the mayor.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor of approving this slate of nominees, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it sounds like you have been approved. Please, congratulations, we do have a lot of applause. Thank you for your willingness to serve. You know, when I was talking to a lot of you folks, I was telling you, oh, it's not too much time, y'all are in for it, I'm telling you, telling you what, it's an important task, and most of you meet once a month, there will be some training that we'll have to go, you'll have to go through, it's not, I think it's half a day or a day of training, and it's, you'll enjoy that, I'm sure. But I look forward, thank you for stepping forward and being willing to serve, because I know a lot of you have time commitments, and a lot of you have families, and it's, we have a great group, I know many of you personally, and I'm thankful that we were able to get you to serve because it's an important task. Does anyone else have any comments about this?
I just think this is emblematic of the type of people that stepped up when the city was being formed, and it just continues, it's just really heartwarming to see. Thank you all very, very much.
I agree, I'd also like to add that this is a truly nominal list of candidates that have been selected. We have an amazing talent pool here in the city of Brookhaven, and I'm glad that we've got the best of the best to serve on these boards. Thank you.
And I guess I can dillaw what was said, I appreciate the efforts and the support of the people that have stepped up to serve on these boards, and I think going forward, the city's going to be good again, so there will be some decisions that will be difficult, and I'm sure that they will be well made and well handled, it's up to time to make the vote. Thank you.
I just want to add, my, thank you, and this is really true public service, and I'm thrilled to see you all here tonight, and again, thank you for your service.
This is, you're an extension of what is local control, so that's what the best part about this is in my mind, you're making decisions that affect your city and your neighborhoods, and I think it's great that you all live here. Everybody on this list, of course, lives in the city of Brookhaven, that's not true for every city. I was very adamant that we wanted to have our judges and people on our alcohol boards be, live in the city of Brookhaven. So that's what we have here. So I'd like the people who were just appointed to the planning commission to please stand, I need to administer an oath of office, so if you're here from the planning commission, please stand up, thank you. Would you want to come forward, if you would, yeah, that'd be great. On the stage? Yeah, bring him on the stage, right.
All right.
The wireless, now we're running, you know, six times. All right. On my honor, I, state your name. Repeat after me, I'm sorry. On my honor, I state your name.
I'm on my honor, I.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute
the office of Commissioner
I'm the Commissioner
of the planning commission
Of the planning commission
of the city of Brookhaven
Of the city of Brookhaven
and will to the best of my ability support and defend
And will to the best of my ability support and defend
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of Georgia
The Constitution of Georgia
and the Charter
and the Charter
ordinances
ordinances
and regulations of the city of Brookhaven
and regulations of the city of Brookhaven
I am not the holder of any accounted for public money
I am not the holder of any accounted for public money
due this state
due this state
or any political subdivision
or any political subdivision
or authority thereof
or authority thereof
I am not the holder of any office
I am not the holder of any office
of trust under the government
of trust under the government
of the United States
of the United States
any other state
any other state
or any foreign state
or any foreign state
which I, by the laws of the state of Georgia
I am by the laws of the state of Georgia
am prohibited from holding
am prohibited from holding
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office
according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia
according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia
I will perform the duties of my office
I will perform the duties of my office
in the best interest of the city of Brookhaven
in the best interest of the city of Brookhaven
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
without fear
without fear
favor
favor
affectation
affectation
reward
reward
or expectation thereof
expectation thereof
Thank you very much, congratulations. If anybody who is appointed to the zoning board of appeals can sit here tonight, please step forward, come to the stage. I love to have a shorter oath, but this is what we have to do. We get through this, I know it takes a while, but if you please raise your right hand, repeat after me. On my honor, I, state your name.
On my honor, I, I am the President
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
that I will faithfully execute the office
that I will faithfully execute the office
of board member of the zoning board of appeals
of board member of the zoning board of appeals
of the city of Brookhaven
of the city of Brookhaven
and will to the best of my ability
and will to the best of my ability
support and defend the Constitution of the United States
support and defend the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of Georgia
the Constitution of Georgia
and the Charter
and the Charter
ordinances
ordinances
and regulations of the city of Brookhaven
and regulations of the city of Brookhaven
I am not the holder of any unaccounted for public money
I am not the holder of any unaccounted for public money
due this state
due this state
or any political subdivision
or any political subdivision
or authority thereof
or authority thereof
I am not the holder of any office
I am not the holder of any office
of trust under the government
of trust under the government
of the United States
of the United States
any other state
any other state
or any foreign state which I
or any foreign state which I
by the laws of the state of Georgia
by the laws of the state of Georgia
am prohibited from holding
am prohibited from holding
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office
according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia
according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia
I will perform the duties of my office
I will perform the duties of my office
in the best interest of the city of Brookhaven
in the best interest of the city of Brookhaven
to the best of my ability without fear
to the best of my ability without fear
favor
favor
affectation
affectation
reward
reward
or expectation thereof
or expectation thereof
Thank you, congratulations. Anybody, Laura Stevenson and Jonathan Grenade, if you want to come over to families, on the stage? Yes. Are you all ready? Please raise your right hand. Aye, on my honor, aye. State your name. Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
that I will faithfully execute the office of judge of the municipal court of the city of Brookhaven and will to the best of my ability support and defend the Constitution of the United States the Constitution of Georgia and the Charter ordinances and regulations of the city of Brookhaven I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money
due this state
due this state
or any political subdivision or authority thereof I am not the holder of any office of trust
I am not the holder of any office of trust
under the government of the United States
under the government of the United States
any other state
any other state
or any foreign state which I by the laws of the state of Georgia
which I by the laws of the state of Georgia
am prohibited from holding I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the constitution and laws of Georgia I will perform the duties of my office in the best interests of the city of Brookhaven to the best of my ability without fear
without fear
favor
favor
affectation
affectation
reward
reward
or expectation thereof
or expectation thereof
Thank you, Judge Stevenson. Thank you, Judge Gurney. Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I've also got the first order of business of, uh, this is the chief judge, Laura Stevenson. Jonathan Gurney is the judge pro temp. Um, and they'll kind of work together to, uh, handle the duties of, uh, our court. But we have an order establishing offenses payable for the city of Brookhaven Traffic Violation Bureau and we need you as judge to sign this. It's your first order. Okay, I've also got the first order of business of, uh, this is the chief judge, Laura Stevenson. Jonathan Gurney is the judge pro temp. Um, and they'll kind of work together to, uh, handle the duties of, uh, our court. But we have an order establishing offenses payable for the city of Brookhaven Traffic Violation Bureau and we need you as judge to sign this. Councilman Bates has a quick announcement.
I'd just like to thank Oglethorpe University and the president, Dr. DeChall, for their generosity in giving us a more permanent home as we bounce around different locations for our Brookhaven City Hall meetings. We are now in a, uh, what I would call semi-commitment location, at least through the end of March, I believe. On the second and fourth Tuesday of every month at 7:00 PM, we'll meet for our city council meetings right here in Lupton Hall. So, thank you for their hospitality.
All right. Thank you. Right now, we have the, uh, public comment section. Uh, so if there's anybody who has any public comments about anything, you have three minutes. If you've given your course to the clerk there, please step forward. Uh, we'll, madam clerk, call the first name on the list.
I think there may be some more still out there.
Has anybody not turned in their form for public comment? All right, just read from the list, please.
Uh, the first one to be turned in was Jay Bearden-Flynn.
Thank you again. Thank you again for the honor of the appointment of the zoning board of appeals. I'm here at this moment to just share some thoughts on a matter you've been, uh, considering over the last few days. I want to apologize for not making any of the meetings where you talked about the selection of the brokerage firm for the city. And, uh, I wanted to share a little of my experience, uh, of working during my term as commissioner for the governor's commission, working on the real estate matter. First of all, all three of the firms you interviewed, the fine firms, all well qualified. Uh, I don't think that, uh, I don't think there's any issues, but their qualifications are there. However, I do think that, um, Colliers might have earned a little bit of the tiebreaker role for the hard work and dedication they demonstrated over the three months and a half from September till middle of December. Uh, they spent hours of work scouring, uh, pretty much every available office space in Brookhaven and sites for the police stations as well. Uh, the police facility is going to be a challenging requirement and it will require, uh, some creativity and, uh, also has an earlier agenda, a need hopefully this summer to, uh, put the police station in place. So Colliers has become very familiar with what's available in Brookhaven, uh, spent a lot of time talking to landlords, investigating their options, and they certainly learned, learned in part of that process that, uh, that the, uh, Class A office landlords are really not interested in a municipal tenant. And so that learning process that Colliers experienced doing that, I think, uh, gives them a tremendous head start along with all the research they've already done. And, uh, I learned, uh, today that they have offered to dedicate 25% of their brokerage fee back to the city to a cause selected by mayor and council, I believe. And so, you know, based on my experience as commissioner, working closely with them, I just wanted to offer my endorsement of Colliers for this role, really for the purpose of, uh, getting the city off to a quick head start because this is an important task and it can't be any time wasted. And I feel like they have two or three-month, uh, lead over a, a new brokerage firm who would be starting fresh. So I would just ask you to consider my thoughts on that and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Any questions?
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
All right. Long time. Yes. Uh, next?
Next, we have Aubrey Blines.
Aubrey Blines, 2900 Chevy Tucker Road. Someone had asked me to break down the amount of taxes and licenses and permit fees that we pay to CAV that should go to Brookhaven. I have this follows. $125,000 in allotted sales tax, $120,000 in liquor sales tax, $100,000 in annual fee, $10,000 in liquor licensing fees, $5,500 in occupational license fees, $15,000 in local property tax to Brookhaven, $90,000 in permits for employees and contractors, for a total of $465,000. And when I met with the CFO, I said, I want a conservative and I want the actual figures and these are actual figures that go to the CAV and should or would be going to, uh, Brookhaven. I would also respectfully ask on action item number 10, that you clarify the nature of Stridner's area.
Next, please. Thank you.
Next, we have Mike, um...
Test, test.
My name is Michael Schwartz. I live in Drew Valley subdivision. I'm here to talk about our high-density neighbors, namely the apartments and condominiums that are on Beaufort Highway that, uh, but are...
Can we speak into the microphone, please?
That are right up against my part of the, uh, of Drew Valley. Uh, I come to you from two perspectives. One is I was a volunteer with DeKalb County Code Enforcement, their ambassador program. And I had an opportunity to drive with one of their senior officers throughout the apartment complexes, one in particular called Cambridge Court, the first one you see when you exit Drew Valley under Beaufort Highway. The officer pointed out that it was virtually a violation of every single unit of that apartment complex. But he began to educate me to the process of negotiating with the owner of that apartment complex. If you cite every single one of them, you could break their back, so to speak. And many times, an operating apartment building is better than one that's closed up and boarded up. So he began to educate me again on the nuances. But additionally, he added that Assistant Director Baker at DeKalb County had lobbied aggressively to raise the fines or the punitive side to code violations to give it some real teeth. And what the officer said to me is he's going to wait a month or two before he reports Cambridge Court so that there's some real teeth in, uh, the punitive side of the violation. And in doing so, Cambridge Court and its final efforts of being under the auspices of DeKalb County actually made substantial changes and modifications to the violations that were so apparent. Gutters aren't falling, roof tiles are replaced and so forth. Then when the transition occurred, the city of Brookhaven was created, you can almost see where everything stopped. So there's a bit of a lawlessness feel amongst the apartment complexes from my experience. Again, I come from two perspectives. I've visited with code enforcement and I lived close to it. So what I'm driving at is asking you all to consider, as you apportion budgets and consider the court system that was just begun today, that you consider some substantial punitive sides and that code enforcement has some real teeth. Because I believe code enforcement is what's going to keep the crime, dare I say, the gunshots, all of the bad things that are associated with the working poor that live in those apartment complexes. Code enforcement probably is the backbone to keep it better, safer, more of a neighbor. And again, I see it virtually all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more public comments?
Yes, we have Marilyn Kowalski.
Kowalski or Kowaski?
Kowaski.
I came out here to the nearest and spoke about the same thing. I live Atlantic Summit, Hud Housing. There's one building between us and the Cherokee Plaza Kroger. And as you know, there's Canterbury Court and that Landbrook and there's other facilities where, which houses a lot of elderly and disabled people. And that Cherokee Plaza Kroger, to me, is utterly insane. You want to take pride in your city, it, to me, it looks like a third world country there. You have people hobbling along in walkers, um, people that are blind and then you have cars whizzing in and out of there 90 miles an hour. It's terrifying and I wish some, you know, somehow it could be made safer. I don't see how it could be made, made much more dangerous. In addition to that, I hesitate to mention this publicly even here, but our apartments, Lennox Summit, if you can drive down there proceeding south from the Cherokee Plaza Krogers, there's just one building between us and them. Our parking lots are very inviting to car thieves. If you live there, you're not really supposed to be able to afford to replace a car. It could work a great hardship on you and, um, and those people are so disabled, it's the only way they can ever, you know, go anywhere on their own. Um, and I, I know that some of the people, I did not vote for the city, but some of the people that live there did in the hope that there'd be more concentrated police protection and for, for the problem of car thievery and just generally people going back and forth from that Krogers and pedestrian traffic. On top of that, I guess it's only a few people that visit and use the visitor's parking, but that is behind my building and among the few people are my kids and they park back there sometimes late at night and it's, it's terrifying because I don't think a car thief is going to go back there. I think that's going to be an even more desperate individual that's going to go back there. Uh, you know, I pray that police protection can improve with the new city and in particular for us.
Thank you, Ms. Kowaski. Kowaski, sorry. Any more public comments?
Woody Jenkins.
Woody Jenkins. Woody Jenkins, public comment. Is that the right? I think that the, I think that the person who's making the comment needs to, I'm not sure. Bill, is that, you know? Can we read or?
That's not a part, we didn't adopt that as one of our methodologies there.
Well, then, uh...
But they, they had, they had placed us in the record that we will provide it to all of you. So it's written record.
Okay. It'll just become a part of the written record, okay?
Would you like to come up?
Would you like to?
And speak it?
We'll get it to you so you can read it off if you'd like. Get him his statement of record if you'd like, in case he wants it. JD, you need to sit down, buddy. JD's had surgery yesterday.
My name is Woody Jenkins and I have lived in the Drew Valley neighborhood since 1988. Drew Valley runs parallel to Beaufort Highway or about a block away. Um, 25 years ago, my truck was stolen. Um, just, uh, two weeks ago, my friend and neighbor was held at the gunpoint. Neighbor's house was broken into, uh, last month. Uh, another neighbor, two houses away, had their car stolen, a 97 Nissan, um, between 9:00 and 11:30 in the evening. Um, I'm at the other end of Drew Valley as Michael is and I, um, am a block away from the Brighton Hills Apartments and was solicited, uh, two weeks ago for prostitution. Heard gunshots at 7:30 in the morning, two of them. Another neighbor called, she's ill, she would be here. And I could go on and on and on. We've had break-ins and so forth and so on. And I understand that happens everywhere. Um, it's just to what degree everywhere. But if you don't keep Drew Valley, uh, or Beaufort Highway in check with the crime, it's going to be like Kudzu and it's going to creep north to the more affluent, um, neighborhoods. I want everybody to have parks and recreation. I want everybody to be safe. I walk everywhere I go and I want to live. And, um, I don't feel safe right now, um, being in this neighborhood. And like I said, I've been there since 1988 and, um, the crime has gotten worse and worse and worse.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Next?
Yes, Greg Trinkle.
Greg Trinkle. Is this the last one or we have one more?
More.
Good evening, council.
Thank you.
My name is Greg Trinkle. I've been a resident in Drew Valley for seven plus years now. And when I was looking over the budget, I did see that we had for reserve police service of 2.25 million. I was just curious on how much that is going to be paid for the CAV and how much the rest would start up. What is the realistic number of police officers we're going to have as they start up for our city?
Thank you, Mr. Trinkle.
Jack Hindred.
Jack Hindred. Come on down, Jack. You're now a public service, so be careful what you say.
As I noted, you're a councilor, we're not going to set up. I noted the comment that there will not be community councils in the city of Brookhaven. I wholeheartedly agree with that. There's one function that, that community councils fulfill though that I hope we don't do and that is as an early warning system to the neighborhoods. Um, I hope we will consider... I hope we will consider instituting and mandating a meeting between developers and the local homeowners association a week or more before hearings, before the ZBA or the planning commission. From a neighborhood perspective, it just helps one understand the issues and then prepare to address them more efficiently and perhaps more forcefully in public forum. From a developer's perspective, which I can speak of as well, I think it helps, again, to clarify the issues, to have a conversation, to confuse a lot of misunderstandings that may be going on in neighborhood listservs and so on. So I think it's a very useful way to both create articulate and informed public input and public discussion around these. And also not let anybody get blindsided, either neighbors or developers, in a public forum.
Thank you very much.
That's all.
This is the last comment, all right. I appreciate good comments tonight, folks, and your concerns. We're aware of most of what people were talking about, but we'd like to hear from residents to their specific concerns. It's always helpful to us. Thank you. Please keep them coming on every meeting. Do we have a consent agenda? We don't at this time? All right, any announcements from staff? Marry or Susan?
I do.
Councilman Madison has a quick announcement.
I'd just like to let the public know that I'll be hosting the first District Three Town Hall event at the end of this month, two dates, which we will post on the city's website and send an email out. But on the 27th of February, 5:30 PM at Briarwood Park, we'll have one meeting. And then the following day, Thursday, the 28th of February, we'll have a second Town Hall event at Capital City Club at 7:00 PM. So...
What was the time of the first one?
5:30 PM, because the Briarwood Park closes. We have to be out of there by 7:00 PM. But the following night is for people who have complexes. Come to either one, come to both. It's an open discussion for any issues that you want to communicate to really more specifically District Three. Thank you.
Thank you, Basie. Any other council have any announcements real quick? Joe? Okay, I have no announcements either, other than what I heard tonight about the community council. And I think we've addressed part of that when it comes to subdivisions. We have a, there's a mandatory meeting already, so we'll address other meetings when it comes to, before these things are heard. We agree with, I know the council that agree with what you said about the wanting to make sure neighborhoods know what's coming before it comes. Thank you. You can make some sure, there's announcements, but go ahead. Go ahead, that's fine.
I'd like to make just a general comment about the speakers that came up. If you haven't followed it, JD, you can have me with this. We swore in on a lot of DeKalb County police officers this week that now have full authority to enforce on behalf of Brookhaven codes and ordinances that prior to this, they had some restrictions on doing. JD, what was the number counted on that, please?
Let's tell the number of officers.
Please.
I think we had about 135, including SWAT, criminal dedicated division, gang units, narcotics officers, traffic, e-commerce, as well as canine and regular foot patrols.
A whole kit and caboodle. And we did this purposely. And it's all in a very systematic, timely fashion. So I really appreciate the comments that came up. We are aware of a lot of the situations. We are moving ahead with all due speed, diligence here, to address these. You're going to be seeing more come out down the road. And we understand that you need to be consistent and fair with code compliance. We are having very aggressive conversations internally, and we'll be having more as we go along. But you will be seeing continual improvement in this whole category. And I really do appreciate the feedback. I don't want it to be left out there that we are unaware of this or unconcerned or not addressing it. We are in a very, very serious manner. That's what I want to say.
And just when you make public comments, realize that we can't engage back with you. That's just part of the rules. So that's why it is a little uncomfortable for us not to be able to say we agree with you. We understand, we've heard of that. So that's why kind of this little section here, I'd like to be able to let the council and myself address some of those things and let you know that we hear and we're working on some of that stuff. Okay, are there any reports and presentations? Okay. Is there any old business?
Yes, Mayor and Council, we have action item number one, which is consideration and approval of CBI on contract that was tabled from your last meeting. We were in need of getting some more pricing imperative costs. And Mr. Short Price is here for the IT department to speak to that if you have any questions.
Okay. So we'll, is there a motion on the table?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the CBI contract.
For a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Daniel, you want to give us a, put them on the timer there so we don't go too long. A brief, maybe a minute on what this is about, just so the folks know. CBI on the telephone contract, I believe, or?
That's correct. The contract that was for approval was to provide internet phone service for the City Hall facility. And I believe you all have had the opportunity to review the contract in your agenda packet. If you have any questions about it, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
You did get three bids and CBI on was, I think, the best bid?
That's correct. We got pitched from CBI on Windstream and AT&amp;T.
He also clarified in the previous, there were several sort of hidden fees. Those involved all the way and the base rate is now during the payment system.
Well, there's still additional fees, as there are with any provider. I mean, you're going to have line taxes that come onto the bill when you receive the bill per line of phone service that you have. So there's a certain amount of fees that we did include an estimate of what we think the fees would be. But the base cost is included in fixed and then there will be fees on top of that. There are mostly taxes that cover 911 and things of that nature.
Is this simply for City Hall or does this also include the municipal court?
Contract in front of you is for City Hall. There will be additional service for the courts and it is recommended that we use the same carrier so that we can get a network in between the two facilities to have proper connectivity.
And this is for a year?
That contract, it's, it hasn't out after a year. I believe the contract has three-year pricing with the option in the contract that was put in there in coordination with the attorneys that has options to get out after one year.
And does it anticipate or will there be any changes when we bring on a police force? And I don't know if that will affect City Hall or what, how does it going to interface with this?
I don't foresee that affecting City Hall, but that will be another facility we'll be bringing online and we will have an NPLS network or a network that will connect all of our facilities together so we can have communication from the police station to the municipal court, police station to City Hall, and municipal court to City Hall, and activity between all of our facilities.
Does the mayor get a red phone in any of this?
Only if you want it.
You have any questions? All right, thank you, Daniel. All in favor of adopting action item one, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Clerk, please, enter the record that action item one has passed. New business. Action item one, this is the action item consideration and approval of City of Brookhaven code compliance sweeps and inspections policy. This is the, for the placeholder. Is this correct?
This is a policy, Mayor and Council. As much as you have not, you're not going to go forward and adopt the sweeps policy as part of your code or if you're not going to adopt the sweeps ordinance at this point in time, you may just want to look into tailing this policy as well because it would come co-committing with, as we pass the ordinance.
I may retable, I've been able to one, consideration and approval of Brookhaven code compliance sweep so that we can make sure that it is compliant with the ordinance and be bringing the two back together.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to make a few comments. First of all, thank you, Mr. Schwartz, for coming forward. And as part of the reason why we're tabled on this is we want to make sure that we address both citizen, not only Drew Valley and the same abandoned residents, but also some of the apartment dwellers. We've got a bunch of things going on and we need to make sure that we take some time to talk to the people that will be affected on both sides of this issue and make sure that we give due consideration and that we pass an ordinance that will in fact be useful and be helpful to everybody at the end of the day. So we're not deferring it to, to put it aside. We're deferring it so we can make it better with a little bit of after-formality of stakeholders involved in this ordinance.
Yeah, we will have a pretty comprehensive policy in this area, but we want to make sure we get it right.
Can I just inquire as to what we think is the timeframe? I mean, I think Mr. Schwartz made a good point that time is of the essence, for sure.
I'd like to put this on the February 26th agenda, so hopefully we have enough time.
I think we need to do it after the first meeting of March to give it a bit. I know that two weeks seem much longer, but I think we need time to the first meeting of March so we can get all the parties together that need to and make sure that staff and legal have a chance to review the outcome of those discussions.
We can make that decision probably early next week or into this week to see if we can. If we can get on the 26th, I'd like to, but it needs to be pushed up because it's not ready. Well, of course, we'll push it up.
Under your rule of order, anything that's titled goes to the next regularly scheduled meeting. It's beyond that.
All right, two has been tabled, three, oh, Ray, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just, I know time is of the essence for this important ordinance, but I just wanted to make mention that the community development...
You have to pull the microphone a little higher to your face.
Hello? Hear me okay? I just wanted to make mention, I know that time is of the essence with this ordinance and especially on the code compliance end of it. The community development staff, our building official, Michael Meyer, has quite a bit of information on this and would like to offer his time to sit down with two councilmembers at a time. And so, you know, we'd like to follow back up with you quickly to lock in that time. And I was asked for you to spend at least about an hour with him. But he has called through the ordinance, he has some examples. And, you know, I think that would be a good foundation for you all as you reach out to the community.
All right, let's get scheduled on that, everybody. So there's any more discussion on that? All right, all in favor of tabling, have we voted on this one yet? Tabling action item one, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Clerk, please, enter the record that action item one has been tabled. Action item two has already been tabled. Action item, or item three. Is there a motion on the table for item three? Same?
Mayor and Council, this is simply the first read. This consideration approval, first read ordinance 020130202, property maintenance and housing standards, chapter 18, nuisances, with an effective date of April 16, 2013. This is the first read.
Okay, no action needed. Okay. Number four has been tabled. Number five?
Mayor and Council, number five is consideration approval of first read ordinance 020130204, providing for the amendment of chapter 15, licenses, permits, and miscellaneous business regulations, amending article 2, business occupation tax. This is the first read.
Is there a motion on the?
You don't need to do this.
No motion, all right. There is no motion. All right, number six?
Mayor and Council, number six is consideration approval of one-read ordinance, amending chapter four, alcohol beverages, ordinance by amending section 4-56A that sets up an alcohol appeals board rather than a hearing officer. This, as you remember, we originally had this as a hearing officer process. After discussion, the council, at the work session, determined they wished to go back to the board process that had been in place in DeKalb County. And this is the one-read ordinance to amend that and to set you up for three to five member of alcohol appeals board if the rest of the alcohol beverage chapter remains the same. This would be appropriate if you desire to do this as a one-read ordinance, it's changed as of tonight.
Okay. No motion, Mr. on that?
You'll need to do this if I...
I may reapprove an ordinance 02013-2-06, amending chapter four, alcoholic beverages, to amend section 4-56, perims A, that alcohol beverage appeals should be heard by a hearing board instead of a hearing officer.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting ordinance 0213-02-05, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Just a clarification. Jim mentioned ordinance 06 and it's 05.
Is that your intent? 05 is the one-read ordinance. Councilman number 06 will be the first read of the set.
Yes, I apologize.
So the tenet of your motion then was the 05 one-read ordinance?
That's correct. 02013-02-05 was my motion.
Thank you.
All in favor of Jim's motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, number seven?
Mayor and Council, number seven is consideration approval of ordinance 020130206, amending chapter four, alcoholic beverages, to amend section 4-56A, that alcohol beverage appeals shall be heard by a hearing board instead of a hearing officer. This is the first read of two read ordinance. There's no actions required.
Thank you. Number eight?
Mayor and Council, number eight is consideration approval of one-read ordinance 020130207, to amend chapter two administration by adding section 2-66, budgetary policies.
Right, Mr. Pike is here.
Your presentation, Mr. Pike?
The city charter stipulates that the council will establish by ordinance a budgetary policy.
Chris, one second, do you have a mic coming to you so everybody can hear? Thank you.
So what I've done with the policy that's in front of you, the draft of policy, is take the requirements that are stipulated in the charter, the requirements that are stipulated by state law, as well as best practices put out by GMA Carl Whitson and the Government Finance Officers Association into a document that kind of will eventually codify the legislative process for Brookhaven, spelling out the responsibilities of staff, when the council can get information, etc., those outline advertising requirements and so on. With that, it is policy. It's something that the council has set. There's many provisions in there that you may have latitude to change. There's some that are based on state law that you won't have the latitude to change. But of all of those, there's certainly open to edits and suggestions if there's data in there that we would like to see changed. With that, I won't have any questions.
I'm, of course, pleased to see that it requires a balanced budget. Is that a common statute among most municipalities?
That's required by state law.
Okay.
I don't see any audit procedures. Is that in the handle of another policy or where does that pick up?
Audit, again, is also set by state law. The law has relaxed, so that is very specific. In short, you have to implement the governmental accounting standards that are at issue. The charter doesn't require an audit policy. And honestly, I don't know what else you would put in there other than to comply with state law. That being said, one thing that I would recommend at some point is council consider establishing an audit committee. I think that would be a very good sounding board and additional set of eyes and ears to assist you kind of keeping an eye on the accounting and auditing function, both internal audit and external audit. both internal audit and external audit.
And would that be done with this or would that be done with a separate?
That would be a separate policy and if you'd like, I could certainly bring a draft of the policy to you as early as the next meeting.
Couple other points, toward the end, we talked about public hearings, I'd like to, I'd like to suggest that we have, we have two public hearings, whether the one is just included in here and then one of them is designated at night or weekend timeframe so that we can get public input that was convenient rather than just whenever it was scheduled, but it's kind of the next lot paid. So if we could add, again, at mayor and council's pleasure, if we could add the two public hearings with one being specified at a time convenience in public, either the weekend, I would appreciate that.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
I know, one of the things that you see with the establishment of a property tax rate is the law there states that you'll have at least one meeting after 6:00 PM. So if you wanted to kind of mirror that language, you know, if there's an increase in taxes proposed, you have to have three public hearings, one of them has to be after 6:00 PM, so if you wanted to kind of copy that and say we have at least one meeting after 6:00, that's probably the one I would recommend as far as time, because you can pick any time you want, as long as you hit that minimal requirement for your budget.
Yeah, that's fine, I'd like to have at least one public hearing specified at the time that, you know, seems to be most convenient for the citizens.
So we could draft language and say we'll have two meet, two public hearings, one of it, at least one of which will be after 6:00 PM.
Final comment at the end? And I don't I'm not sure how this applies, but the passage of the budget occurs at the first day of fiscal year regardless of whether the council acts or doesn't, I'm wondering is that a state requirement or is that just a procedural requirement?
That's a charter requirement.
That's a charter requirement.
But keep in mind that even though it does pass on that date, January 2nd, you can turn around and amend it. It doesn't like immediately lock you in for the entire year and I would anticipate, I mean, it's possible, but I would never anticipate a council not passing the budget before that time.
And, you know, with our calendar year or with our fiscal year being January 1st, you get into some scheduling issues with the holidays and things toward the end of the year and you begin the crunch. I was concerned that it began the budget without the final approval by a council board for scheduling reasons and then anything else, just, you know, not be able to get it done together to approve if presented in the time crunches and the year end pressures.
With that in mind, if you'd like, you could make the requirement even sooner than December 31st, you could back it up. For example, not that I recommend, I've been doing the charter, but they have to have it adopted by October 30th, which is 60 days in advance. I don't think that's a good idea, but that's what the charter says. But you could go to note number 33, December 15th if you'd like, and then that still buys you another 15 days before it goes into effect.
Okay. I was gonna say, we'll talk about that and see what the best, but I just, I'm always concerned when something happens without actually, particularly with our schedule.
Could you just get the proposals of those two items you mentioned so we can review those, shoot, that's the one I want to put into the legislative policies?
Absolutely.
All right. All right, anything else for Chris?
Mr. Mayor, just-
I'm having trouble with hearing back here and listening to you talking about whether you can ask.
No, listen, could you, listen, could you boost the volume on the wireless microphone, please? And I guess everybody's microphone.
Feel free to yell out if you can't hear us before the end of the speech.
Well, I did.
Thank you. No, he wasn't talking about raising taxes, he just said, you know, there's a law required that if you want to raise taxes, you have to have three public hearings, one of them has to be after 6:00 PM. Is that right, what you said?
That's right.
Yeah, that's state law.
And state law.
And in our charter, believe, if you want to raise taxes over a millish cap, we have to go have a public referendum on it, so.
Mr. Mayor, I can hear you.
I'm a professional. Right, you just have to, you just really, everybody will, just a little advice, get up on the microphone as close as you can and people can hear you a lot more clearly and you can't just, these aren't, you know, omnidirectional microphones, they're directional, so you have to be right in front of them and it gets the best, I mean, you can hear how clear the sound system is, you just have to use the microphones the right way and well, everybody will be able to hear just fine. We'll have a training, I'll train and we'll do a transition, proper mic etiquette.
I'll just add to that that normally I don't have a problem speaking, but I am definitely under the weather tonight, so I apologize.
We're all literally under the weather, yes. Anything else?
Just for record, Mr. Mayor and to councilman Meyer's point, the current practice right now for your budget review and getting that information out to the public, you and Chris are supposed to be posting it on the website and Mr. Pike has been answering lots of questions concerning that, both from the public and from members of the council, but we also, in addition to the additional public hearing that you are suggesting that Mr. Pike will present an amendment to you all, don't forget that you've also scheduled a work session in addition to these public hearings, we have a public hearing and then we'll have a council meeting following that public hearing because in the decision on the budget we made that, remember there is a work session-
All right. Yeah, what is that, what is that date for the first?
February 23rd.
February 23rd, that's a Saturday, what time?
9:00 AM to noon.
And where?
At, right, City Hall.
And we have a-
Conference room.
Public hearing on the budget, September 23rd at 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, that is a work session.
Oh, I'm sorry, work session for the public council, all right.
Correct.
As everybody who's welcome to come and watch that. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Pike? Go ahead.
Because we're on a calendar year and we talk about setting these priorities late during the holiday season, the suggestion is that we possibly move it up, even if you hear talking around Thanksgiving or any time period in there, I'd like to just make the request that we put a request for a meeting together with consensus of attendance.
All right.
Make sure that we have-
Everybody available.
Remind us the opportunity for somebody on a shorter and out of the longer notice that will not be able to be attendance. So just a question or a comment there?
We'll have a crucial, everyone have a crucial dates, you know, for things like budget, things of that nature, where we have another advanced time and everybody knows when those things are going to be, so there's no, you know, as we move forward from this point forward, we've been in a very tight timeframe for lots of things and it's part of being a startup. We'll get a little more regular with our meeting schedule, our agendas, our work sessions, our hearings, with lots of those, lots more regular procedures in place once we get past this, or I think we're getting there right now as a matter of fact, so hopefully in the future we'll have more notice than we've been giving each other and to the public on everything.
And, Mr. Mayor, just for my, my, I think that the additional public hearing is a great idea, I just want to make sure that the consensus from the majority of the council is wanting to do that.
We'll discuss that, once we get your language, we'll discuss it, I think that's, that's what we want to do.
Okay.
Thank you. And that was number eight, correct?
Yes.
All right. Any action, Mr. here?
Mayor and Council, this is a one read ordinance and since, inasmuch as you have given feedback and your amendments to it and you want to look at those amendments, I would suggest to the mayor and councilman, if you need to update this, until the finance department can give them the information.
Is there a desire on top of the table this or do you want to, is that amended or do you want to table? Okay, all right.
Nick, a motion need to be made to table?
Sure, okay, good.
I would move to table consideration approval of the one read ordinance 0201302-07, to amend chapter two, administration by adding section 2-66, budgetary policies.
Your second?
I second.
Motion, Mr. Table? Is there any discussion? All in favor of tabling item number eight, please signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Clerk please enter the record that item eight has been tabled. Number nine?
Mayor and Council, item number nine is consideration approval of first read ordinance 020130208, to amend chapter two, administration by adding section 2-66, budgetary policies. This is a first read, no actions needed.
Thank you. Number 10, is there a motion on number 10?
I'm asking if you move to remove it from the-
I move we, we remove item number 10 from the agenda at this time.
Your second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of removing item 10 from the agenda, that's the portion of state that is now tabled, so removing is it for it?
That's correct.
Okay, please signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Clerk please enter the record that item 10 has been removed from the agenda. 11 has been dealt with. All right, number 12?
Mayor and Council, number four is action item consideration approval of franchise agreement, the payment of franchise fees, the city for the use of the city for right of way for electrical lines.
Is there a motion on the table, on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, I'm who's that we consider and approve resolution 2013-02- I'm sorry, I misread the number on that. Mr. Mayor, I'm who's that we consider and approve the franchise agreement for payment of franchise fees for city, to the city for the use of city right of way for electrical lines, the mayor to sign next meeting agreement.
Your second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Could you just clarify when this goes into effect?
Bear with, I've forgotten how questioned I didn't, I wasn't prepared. It will go, and I can tell you, it'll go in effect upon the determination by the Georgia power of every item, every placement in the city and that's where it'll start. I can't tell you if they've done that or not.
Who does that need, Mr. Pike?
Yeah, the Georgia power does an audit and they'll do, they'll do an audit and they'll make the determination of all of the, all of the accounts within the city. They'll, they'll go ahead and then what they do is they have to follow that they use based on, based on the amount of monies that are generated out of the city and then they'll pay us, I shoot up 4% I believe is the share on the franchise fees. That's how they do it, they don't actually measure electrical lines and how much light which they use, it's all proportioned out of what it is, but before they can do that, they actually have to do an audit of the entire city to find out what's in the city, what's not in the city. And they won't, they won't start paying us until they finish that audit.
This is, this is a fee that's prepaid annually by the Georgia power, correct?
This is the, this is the same fees that we were talking about when we were at the, at the summit building and the county was already that.
I actually believe it's postpaid. Postpaid, so, so electrical fees, franchise fees generated in 2013 would be paid in March 2014 on a standard basis.
Yes, but what sometimes is negotiated is that the first year, you know, Georgia power will give you some money upfront, maybe right until next year.
Does this enable us then to continue negotiations trying to get earlier payment on next year's fees?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, very, very good.
Since I couldn't hear that in the rear, I just would thought I'd repeat that statement, it's- You bet, good reminder, thank you. It's just a discussion of- Traditionally, these franchise fees are paid for George Power in March of the year of the following year. So for example, if we adopt a disagreement, it would be, the city would be paid in March of 2014. And first year circumstances, I think it is somewhat negotiable.
It is.
Because this is, this is an increase in the fees that will be paid by the citizens of Brookhaven, I'm curious, I see in here it's a 4% fee, I'm looking at the municipal franchise fee schedule, it was on the Georgia power website, inside city limits municipal franchise fee is 2.919%. I'm curious why the difference or can we get it reduced to what their published rate is versus what their contract rate is so that the citizens aren't paying any more than than they need to for this fee?
Certainly look at it.
And I, you're welcome, I mean, this was-
I will certainly look at what you desire. And I can't give you the answer on that, but I can certainly look at it.
Okay, you know, I mean, this is presented to Georgia Public Service Commission's final order, so some, there's a, there's a discrepancy between what they're publishing and what they're, they're contracting for, so again, because it is an increased fee, I want to make sure it's as low as possible.
We'll certainly look into it if that's your desire.
Yes, you did. Yes, it is.
So do you want to hold off on, on this tonight?
Well, do I understand that we don't start getting paid till we pass this, pass this agreement?
That would be correct also.
I don't have to execute it till we've got that issue looked at, right?
You don't have to.
I think there was money.
Well, if I have to, citizens are paying more than I have to.
We can clarify this, folks, if we-
This is, this franchise agreement is the franchise agreement that was presented to us by George Power. We're glad, glad to call back to George Power and ask those questions for you. Typically, you don't get to change the franchise agreements, these are pretty standard, they go across the state on those, but I would be glad to go and see if there's a difference between what they're charging us or pay, or going to pay us and what they are allowed to charge out to the citizens, so.
Or how, how there was some sort of split in the, out of the 4%, where the citizens are paid half of that amount and then the other half was already being paid or, that's, that's what I recall from having looked at this issue previously, that there's, there was already a fee being paid by everybody.
Outside city limits, according to this schedule, 1.0801%, so it's roughly half of the inside.
So that's why I did try to look at- 3.91, 2.91, plus you add that one, the total would be 4, 3.91.
No, I, they're, they're independent fees, they're not, they're not total, they're, this, the 2.91 is the-
this, the 2.91 is the-
So, this is what we're paying now, the one, we, you and I, before we incorporated, we were paying the one point.
Theoretically, yes.
Right, so, if, if this, what I understand you're saying, this is an addition to that?
Yeah.
Or separate distinct, it'll be an increase of 1.9 percent, according to Georgia Power.
Effective municipal franchise fees for inside-city limits and outside-city limits will be clarified playing the following rate, and the total revenue will be still.
Right, this one percent we're already, we were already paying, so it'd be an increase if you, for us municipal, to this percentage.
That's correct.
So, the increase of 1.91 percent.
That's, that's correct.
That's what I understood, so, but, so that's different than what we have in this agreement, it's just a plain four percent without any, it just seems a little glossed, not glossed, I don't know if it's glossed over, but it's, I agree with you on this question on that, is what I'm saying.
And also, if you use, I mean, Georgia Power, the rate calculator, it's on their website, that's the same number that pops up on there, if you're, if you're looking at inside versus outside, it's that 1.08 versus 2.91 number, so, um, maybe they just haven't updated the form of the contract.
I'm just saying, I'd, I'd like to recommend that we adopt the agreement as presented by Georgia Power, uh, to give us the ability to begin collecting on revenue that the city needs, and if we find that we have incorrectly calculated this number, then we can adjust, but to lose what I believe equates around $50,000 over two weeks.
It's about $200,000 a month, if, in fact, the franchise fees are 2.5 million a year.
I, listen, I understand that too, but I do agree that I want to make sure that this number is, I want to know where exactly where it came from. We can adopt it, but I just, I'm gonna hold up on signing it until we have an answer to that question, if it's all, that's what I want to do.
The, let me give a little bit more clarification too, since we're discussing, I did pull up the Carl Vincent Institute study that was done to, uh, give people an idea of what to expect, and it does state that the increase, um, that the city of Brookhaven residents would occur, incur, would be an increase of less than 2 percent in electric bills of city customers.
Well, that was what I was saying, it seemed like it was a 1.91 percent increase from what we were already paying, but that still doesn't add up to the four percent, it might be rounded up to four percent, but it's a total of 3.91 percent. But I, I, I'm not comfortable signing that, this order until that, if it's a rounding error or a rounding, uh, we, we've talked about it, but I'm not sure.
Well, is it possible to retroactively adjust this number if we find that we're incorrect and-
Well, it has to be submitted to Georgia Power after, that's the thing, it's not, it doesn't come into effect until they did it from us, it's a contract we have to have with them, is that correct?
Correct, um, but keep in mind, this is their number, this is their language, and this is their agreement, um, I don't know what the city attorney thinks about this, but, uh, you know, could we at least have a range of the numbers that Mr. Iyer has, has found up to the four percent as presented by Georgia Power themselves with explanation, so that we could, um, move the matter along and then wait for the mayor's signature once we have that understood?
I agree that that's a, that, that is a very good, uh, solution to give, uh, the responsibility of clarification on this matter to our administrative staff with the range, that way we can move this contract forward. So, I move that we-
You have to amend the action, I believe, is that right? To complete that language?
I would simply say that you, yes, I'd simply say if you wanted to amend it, that you would adopt the, uh, the franchise agreement, but you would get the sum of money that the franchise would be, would be between the 2.9 percent and 4 percent, dependent on the state of the law as it presently exists.
I have one more question before we end it, so, if we do it indeed, um, if we tabled this two weeks, could we indeed be passing on revenue for this?
The mayor's not gonna sign if you're not gonna pass on any of these transferred to mayor.
So, I mean, well, what would be the upside, downside to signing it tonight, looking for a further amendment, or tabling it, getting it corrected, and then having a proof package?
Well, I, if you pass it tonight at the four percent, this is the standard that we would be sending back in there. Now, I don't really know about, uh, what Councilmember Iyer's put, put forward here tonight, uh, we, this is, this, all I have is the contract that they agreed to, that they agreed to on this, which is a standard contract that all the other cities signed. Now, if we're not, if you're not satisfied to, to go forward with this, if you want us to do more research on it, to make a determination why Georgia Power sent us a four percent contract and that they should have sent us a 2.9 percent contract, we can do that.
What I'd like to see is a, um, if, not necessarily what Georgia Power, but if you can get the language from what the PSC, because the PSC sets this rate, so if you can find out from the PSC what the rate is, that's, that's what happens.
Uh, that's what we're, that's what we'll endeavor to do, but-
Make sure it drives with whatever's in the contract.
I understand, but, but here again, you want us to, you want to say, we'll sign a contract, and I just have some concerns about them authorizing you to amend the contract on, on amount.
No, I wouldn't be amending it, I would just not, we'd have to, have to start the call meeting or something next week to, to deal with it.
If I could just address Councilmember Gavius', um, question, I think the answer to your question, sir, is, um, we wait two more weeks, and Georgia Power waits two more weeks, because the accounting of the value of a franchise to be remitted to the city doesn't happen until the end of the year, and then the payment is made in the spring of the following year. So, what Mr. Riley mentioned early on in his presentation is that Georgia Power will audit all of those accounts that rest inside the city limits of Brookhaven, so, the delay would be the delay for them to get started on that, it would not delay the payment that the city would anticipate, uh, in the spring of 2014. It is our hope that we will be able to work with Georgia Power as they have practiced with other new startup cities, that we will get a percentage of that, and I don't think that will be held up either, uh, because, again, they have to go through this exercise, and I don't anticipate, uh, a check, a partial payment check in the next couple of weeks from, from Georgia Power, and, and I understand Mr. Riley's reluctance at this point, but to go to your question, it's a matter of pulling the trigger with Georgia Power so they know that they are officially doing an audit of all accounts within the city. So, they, waiting two weeks, I don't think interrupts the line of payment that would be coming to the city, uh, in 2014, and hopefully that partial payment that will be coming maybe in the next couple of months.
Thank you for clarifying that. Did the Kier County, when you say other cities signed this four percent standard unit, did Kier County originally have that same rate, the four percent?
I'll have to go back and see what-
I'm sorry?
Just for the municipality. There's a section, everybody already pays, and then there's a section, there's a, a piece of this guy.
Just to get a little further clarification, so, the date that Georgia Power would, would account to would be the, the date on creation of the city?
It would be the date of the, it would be the date of this franchise agreement, or the date that they finished their, uh, determination of all of the accounts within the city, whichever is later.
So, so would postpone those, that, that finalization of their accounting, two weeks?
If, in fact, they had finalized all the accounts that they had with the, inside the city, they would, they would not start paying us until we sign the franchise agreement. That was, that would be the trigger. If we've signed the franchise agreement and they have not finished their procedures to make the determination, it doesn't matter when we sign it, because until they find, until they finish, they don't start the counting date.
Do we know if they've done that?
I don't have the answer to that.
Maybe we could call that more, as well.
I'm just a little confused, I understood Mr. Wiley to say the, uh, the contract only doesn't go into effect till we give them this contract, and, and I just understood , um, Garrett to say that, in fact, we, once, once they account for our municipality, can we get paid for the entire year, going back to January?
No, ma'am. What, what she was saying is the payday won't be affected, but-
What time period they count it?
That's right, the, the time of, that they make their calculations for could be affected, there are two, there's two start switches. One of the start switches is this franchise agreement, if that's not signed, it's not gonna start. The second start switch is they have completed their audit of the area that now encompasses the city and then all the accounts, so they can make their calculations, until they do that, they won't switch on that counter.
But they determine the payment depending on that first start switch?
It's whichever it comes later.
Thanks for the question, why, why, why did we not consider this earlier?
Well, let me, let me address that a little bit, I, uh, this agreement that we had before us, and that we're considering tonight, is the, uh, is the exact same number that was used in Carl Vincent's study for the city for the franchise fee for Georgia Power.
Well, it's not exactly, what did it say, 3.91?
It, no, it says a four percent, so it says that increase from the current rates is less than two percent, implying that-
Right, what?
Was, uh, just above two percent.
I think what Jim is saying is what he's got added is 3.91 percent, what is it that, what, 2.91 was what the one, 2.91, what the, what the, what's in the contract is four percent, maybe even four percent.
Well, and, and, and this- Well, we're talking about a hundred thousand dollar decision.
But we're also, we have no idea whether Georgia Power would begin their audit, so, you know, we heard that there's two triggers, we're at the mercy of Georgia Power with respect of when this starts, they could delay the, the audit until later in the year, I mean, with no idea of, of when that audit begins or ends, then, you know, we're, we're-
I would imagine, and this is-
I mean, have, have we formally requested them to begin an audit?
Councilmember, I've had discussions with the area manager, and the area manager, they are working on, or have been working on, I simply don't know the answer for you tonight if they've completed it.
Um, my recommendation would be to give our administrative staff the liberty to research this, um, and find an answer for the council's approval before the execution, but not to wait the two weeks until our next council meeting, so, so my recommendation would be to amend this, amend this ordinance to give them the authority to research and, uh, present that information to the council, at which point we'd be able to execute the contract.
Definitely, you know, up to four percent, uh, you know, the, the city's line could fill in, uh, prior to the mayor's signature.
So-
Is that possible, Bill?
The, the form would need to say that, that we would execute an agreement at the legal limit as allowed by law, and that would be the form of it, and as long as it said that, and we had the legal limit, and we could, then, you were satisfied for was the legal limit, then we would, you could execute it, if it was 2.91, you could still execute it.
I want to make that motion. Why didn't you repeat that? Or write that down?
So, so if you want to, if you want to make, I think we had a motion on-
Did I have, I'd like to amend my motion, please. Mr. Mayor, I move that we, um, amend the consideration and approval of the franchise agreement for payment of franchise fees to the city for the use of city right-of-way for electrical lines the mayor has signed, and execute agreement subject to our, our administrative staff researching the difference between Councilman Iyer's number up to the legal limit, uh, allowed by law, as provided in the proposal tonight.
Is there a second?
I second. I could just get clarification, is your intent that upon the determination of what the legal limit is in the State of Georgia, that that number would be inserted into the agreement, and the mayor is authorized to sign that agreement, is that the intent of your motion?
That is the intent of my motion, once the, once the number is confirmed by administrative staff, administrative staff, and conveyed to council or mayor, that is the intent, have them go ahead and execute the con, execute the contract at that time.
Is there a second? You ready to second it? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'll probably give it a minute, you got that written down, right? Who's that? Alright, um, action item 14 has been removed, or, yeah, it was removed, or was it tabled?
It was removed.
Okay. Uh, action item 14.
Well, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, this next item is, uh, the schedule of the Planning Commission and Zoning Board Appeals, uh, meeting dates, there's a calendar that is in your packet, and your approval.
Where's the green hand, where is it? Well, they don't have the authority to stuff their own schedule, or they have to file this schedule?
This is what is coming from the community development department, so that they can, have a date where applications are filed, but then, uh, there is preparatory time on the staff's part-
Right.
-to make sure the application process is complete, and then they prepare their analysis, and then there's kind of a patient property owners posting, and then also public notice in the paper, so there is a time-
Right.
-line on, on all of that, that reaches then to the-
Right.
-specific hearing.
I'd like, I'd like to always be able, in concert with the staff, be able to set their, their time, their, their calendar date, because I think that's, do you all agree with that, or no?
Yeah, and, and also, I was gonna ask, if there's only one schedule attached, and I was trying to figure out which one it was, it looks like the Planning Commission, the, the, you know, SDPC, that, and some other things.
Yeah, Planning Commission.
Well, is, was this-
I was gonna say that the Zoning Board Appeal schedule wasn't approved, or wasn't attached, so-
If we, um, don't adopt this calendar, because we want to make sure that the staff and our boards and commissions are on the same page, is it gonna affect the, is this gonna affect the duties of the, of the ZDA to hear anything in the next ten days, two weeks?
Under the law, right now, the ZDA can make us have a special call meeting with a 24-hour notice to the, uh, appropriate, uh, news outlets for dissemination.
So, we could adopt this, and then if we need to amend it, the next meeting after they've met, we could-
Yes, absolutely, and remember too, um, during the interim between now and when they have their meeting, they have to be trained.
Okay.
So, they have to receive that training.
Alright, so as long as we initially know, but let the staff know, if you would, that I expect-
Yes, I'm sure he's scared.
I would expect them to kind of coordinate with our, um, boards and commissions on, on scheduling. If you want to speak, just, you can, you can.
There's no microphone here, but I'll try and speak up sort of, but you can hear me. Um, I, I just wanted to let you know there actually is a section in, uh, chapter 27 of the zoning ordinance that, uh, requires the, the mayor and council to set the schedule of regularly scheduled meetings for the planning commission.
Right.
It's not as specific in the section that enables the zoning board appeals, however, there is language in there that also states that the zoning board appeals needs to meet regularly, so, I, I just wanted to let you know that, that there will be an action required of the mayor and council to, to formalize the schedule.
I, I, I'm comfortable adopting the schedule, but I would always reserve the right to amend, of course, and I would like to hear from, once these boards get up and running, once they have their chairs and they got a meeting, what's good for them, two, and, you know, only what's good for, what's good for the city as well, that they can, you know, submit to us what they'd like to, after speaking with staff, what they'd like the schedule to be, if it needs to be changed at all.
Well, when we have all of those, uh, board members together, when they're being trained, we can make sure that's the first item of discussion.
Is it okay with you? Alright, thank you.
As I was gonna say, some, some of the dates are, are set by notice required, and there's, I said, there is some flexibility with, with one date, that everything will all happen and arrest.
Alright, um, is there a mic, a motion on this?
I move that we approve the planning commission schedule for 2013, uh, as attached, um, and we'll approve the zoning board appeals when that schedule is before us.
Is this second? Okay. All in favor, or a discussion? All in favor of adopting action item 14, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, now, I'll probably give it a minute, it's passed, action item 15?
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council.
Almost done, by the way.
Um, this is the approval of an estimated budget for the court build-out, um, I've been communicating with you all over the last, wait for a week and a half regarding the efforts that are being made to, you know, have the court open, and we have really a two-stage process, one, where we open the court and allow the court clerk to be seated to collect traffic fines, and then there is the opening of the court where your new judge will preside. So, what you have before you is the build-out of the space, for the space that has been leased from municipal court. The amount, um, is a total of $202,001.64. Some of these items are within my range of approval, uh, but others and most of them are outside of my range, and therefore, that's why the entire packet is before you this evening, uh, and basically, it follows along the same pattern that you allow for the IT services, when you provide it and enable them to have a blanket contract so that they could go out and get all the software and the hardware, this will allow the same thing to occur, uh, for the build-out of the municipal court, uh, it is more delineated in terms of exactly, uh, from the contractor all the way down to the scanning equipment, uh, for security. Mr. Placadel, who has been handling this for me, um, had to leave this evening, he wasn't feeling well, but, uh, Mr. Schulteis is here, uh, who is working very closely with JB on this build-out, so he's here to answer any questions. I might add, while he's getting up here, uh, you did approve, uh, $16,000, uh, just over the last couple of days, and then last week you approved the $28,000 not-to-exceed contract for the, the contractor, um, and the rest is what remains to, to build it out, uh, to, we're looking at within, uh, ten days, uh, February the 19th, to have the court clerk seated to collect traffic fines, and we're looking at March 1, I believe, for the judge to preside during, uh, that first week.
I guess, have we confirmed that all of these costs are outside of, uh, contracts that we previously signed with vendors and, and, uh, other, uh, entities?
we previously signed with vendors and other entities that are...
They are. In fact, I had that conversation with Mr. Schulteis on part of that $16,000 startup certificate order, the IT equipment, and that is not part of their $512,000 blanket approval. This is part of the court cost startup, which has been budgeted for your annual budget.
And these costs are consistent with the proposed budget?
Yes. In fact, we budgeted $250,000, so this is about $48,000 beneath that amount.
Thank you. Are you responsible for coming in and having a budget?
Well, that would be your staff, sir. J.D. has been out getting a number of proposals. Mr. Schulteis has been a great help. The public works department, Jada Drysdale has, if you want to find a bargain, she can find it. And also Brad Niblebrook, our purchasing agent, has been a real team effort, heroic effort, because, you know, they have basically 10 days to get this court up and running and secured, down to safes that will not only count the money, but will check for whether or not it's counterfeit, to scanning equipment, to metal detectors, to all of it.
All right. Stone guns?
I didn't see that on the list unless that's coded differently.
The budget for the judge?
We will have police officers there too, so I'm sure that'll be equipped for this.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Schulteis besides what we already talked about?
I guess just a quick clarification on the off-duty police, and I'm confused by the, it's probably me. It says $35 per hour, 36 hours per week of hold uniform officer presence, assume 45 weeks of court operations. Not sure, 36 hours of hold uniform officer presence covers 45 weeks of court. Oh, okay, I see, never mind.
I have a question. Is the, under interpretation services, we've got a mileage cost approaching here of $2,400 plus. I mean, is that typical applies to the area?
Well, that would be for, for wherever they're coming from, if the interpreter is somebody that works out of a home or out of professional office.
Is that a contingent?
That would be considered.
That's an, that would be paid out as billed, but that's what's anticipated. So the estimate is, the estimate is high, looking at how many times the person...
I think Joe was kind of getting at, there were several certified interpreters in the city.
I think we have a few Spanish-speaking people.
They're certified too.
Especially from LAA, that's, use all their trainings in Spanish. If you live for the police force, whatever, we can't find a certified person to do this?
Let me answer that question. You have, under the state bar rules, you have to have certified interpreters and they have to pass certain standards. There's certainly a number of people who are interpreters. I believe that the people that J.D. has found are persons that are already working in courts, who, it's a pretty specialized methodology and I think he has competitive rates as to what they're getting in Dunwoody or Sandy Springs or any of the other sister cities that are, that work under this kind of methodology.
Bill, Joe, if you have some, I know they're all, I've passed some of them, not just certified, but they're certified in court. If you want to branch out and find some of those people, maybe present to J.D. and see if there's a chance for us to get some, this is a Brookhaven interpreter who's certified for court proceedings, I think that's a, I think that's great. So that's something we could, you could pick lead on if you want mine.
I'd love to, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I agree, and I just have one comment for Daniel on our IT. I want you to try and find cost savings wherever possible. The best value out of the taxpayers' dollar is every $50,000 we spend is potential police officer for the citizens, so I want to make sure that we're getting good value from taxpayers' dollar.
Absolutely.
Are these costs from startup through year end? And are there other anticipated costs for the court system that will come in at some later date when something happens in the court system?
Those costs are through year end, however, there may be...
Is that a 12-month budget, is it 11-month budget or 10-month budget?
That is correct, but as in terms of the court system, there may be some changes that come into place when the police department gets tied in to incorporate in e-ticketing and support for that, so that could be some additional cost that we may encounter, but...
But our police, like our police costs for the court will come down, we'll have our own police there. That's one thing that will...
Not certain if we're going to have our own uniformed police officers there, if we're still going to have off-duty police officers over those shifts.
Okay, yeah, okay. We can discuss that another time, but one thing real quick before you leave the stage. Can we make, you or J.D. can maybe make the court available so that our judges can have a tour in the next few days that they're, you know, if your judges can match, if we can set something like that up?
I certainly think that's very, very doable, just to check with contractors to see if they are in construction, but I don't see any problem with that.
Keep my heart hat on. If you give your heart to trust Keith right there, appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Daniel, this may not be your area, but in terms of the security for the court, I mean, I see we've got, of course, off-duty police officers in the lawn system, walk-through metal detector, lawn detector. Is that pretty much S.O.P. for municipal courts?
It is. Off-duty police officers are armed and that is pretty standard, of course, to have that level of action and not more.
I've got one more, it's kind of an important question. Can we, if a lawyer comes to court and shows his bar card, can we make sure that he doesn't have to take his belt off when he's going through the metal detector? Because my pants fell down one time. Right there, it drives me down is that we have to take our belts off and if he knows we've got a bar card. So I don't want to, that's one privilege I want to give the person.
I move that they match that.
All right, is there a motion on the floor? For numbers, was it 15?
15. I move we approve the estimated budget for court buildout processes. I have the process of IT related and other things contained in the memo presented by staff.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of, sorry, any objection?
No, I was just going to say, in the future, and this is something I talked to the city manager about, I'd like these memorandums to have a simple one line that they, that these items have been purchased or acquired pursuant to the Brookhaven purchasing policy and have whoever it is that puts forth this memo sign that.
Yes, we can absolutely do that. I will say that...
And I'm not assuming that they are, I'm just...
Right, I was just going to say, on behalf of the staff, you know, we are doing that. Mr. Schulteis last night was trying to get something signed and he didn't have that note on it and my policy is I don't sign that, so they know that and we're very careful. He hears me all the time asking, is this part of the 512 blanket or is this something new? So we'll absolutely put that on material for coming to mayor and council.
Any other discussion? All in favor of adopting action item 15? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm personally going to dismiss, but action item 15 has passed. 16 has been removed, 17, 16 was moved up, 17 has been...
Was moved up also.
Moved up also. 18, we have one more after 18.
18 was the order that established the fences and the chief judge has already signed that order and that would take us to 19 on that.
19, last one.
Mayor and council, after the judge signs the order establishing the traffic violations bureau and the fines that she has done already, the final requirement is the approval by resolution of the municipal court, of municipal court fee schedule by the mayor and council. So what we put into our package is the resolution approving the fines and fees schedule that has been proposed by the chief judge, which he signed earlier this evening.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I move we approve resolution R-2013-02-02, adopting the municipal court fee schedule for office expenses and the greater cost of operation of Brookhaven Municipal Court and for other purposes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Are these going to be posted on the website? Or are they going to be posted somewhere?
The fine schedule, yes, we can...
Or is that appropriate?
Sure. To answer your question, councilmember, that'll be the standard fines. These are the, these is you directed. We went to the record store in DeKalb County, we got their fine schedule and made it ours. So there would be no difference between what was occurring previously and today, just a smooth transition. These fees and fines will actually be placed into the computer and so all of those things that people can go online and pay will populate onto the, onto the, onto the system so they'll, it'll pop up for them to pay online, it'll pop up for them to pay when they come into pay the window. And as a resolution, if resolutions are posted on the web, then it will be posted on the web, is the resolution also.
And, yes, it's, as long as it's there, I mean, I find it interesting, as a parent I worked with, I had this two, three years ago, so I could do it with my son as he was beginning to drive, reminding that these are all the things that you could be budgeted for. A list seems to go on forever and there's some that I never even considered.
All right, yes, parents, please take the, our fine schedule list and it will be online and put it in your children's, in the mudroom or in their bedroom or on top of their computer. All in favor of adopting action item 18? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm personally going to dismiss, action item 18 has been adopted. Other business? Other business? Pocket comments? So any more pocket comments? Okay, any pocket comments? From what I've seen, all right. Mayor's comments? I do have a few comments and we'll get you out of here, we're almost done. It dropped my memory, we were talking about some of the savings for the municipal court and whatnot. City staff has been doing a great job and I know it's a little thing, but they've saved $1,000 here, $1,500 there, just by being proactive and innovative when it comes to purchasing furniture, filing cabinets and things of that nature, taking apart from filing cabinets rather than having a company do it, as per the budget would have fallen for. So we have a great staff in place with a lot of these vendors, where the employees are finding ways to save the city money without being asked to. Of course, I basically asked, you know, to Daniel look for cost cuts, but they're coming up with things. I was walking in the office the other day and I saw a bunch of tools and some gloves on the floor of the purchasing manager's office and a can of paint. I said, what in the world you have, you're not buying stuff for your house from the city? He's like, no, we actually saved some money by, this is something to furnish for ourselves that we were returning to the, to the company. And it saved the city, I think it was $1,600 or something like that. And we stored it in the basement of the building here rather than have it go in storage somewhere else that they wanted to charge. So I just want to congratulate the staff and encourage the staff and let them know that I really appreciate, and Marie, you can please convey this on another few years, that I really appreciate the fact that we have conscientious people working at the city of Brookhaven who are trying to find a way to do things more efficiently, save the city money, save taxpayers' money, because that's what it's really all about, save the taxpayer money. In addition to the cost saving, of course, I've been seeing around city hall, I've also been getting a lot of comments from people, email, phone, and just the other day we were back an hour at lunch in Dunwoody at the Hickory House and a fellow came up and recognized, recognized, said, this one that you know, I just left the city hall, I'm assistant of Brookhaven, I went over there to try to get an issue with a neighbor's tree resolved and although the city has nothing to do with this issue, I didn't realize that, they told me what the proper procedures were, but the city had no jurisdiction over. Everybody was very helpful, everybody was very, you know, knowledgeable about my issue even though they knew they couldn't help me, they did everything they could to try to make sure my issue was solved, even though there was no responsibility resting with the city. And I want to let you know, I really appreciate that and it's a breath of fresh air. He would shake our hands and was very congratulatory about that, very excited that his city responded to him in that way. We've gotten other comments from people talking about how friendly the staff in the front of the city hall is and how they've been very, very helpful. The staff have been helpful on numerous occasions and I want to convey that to you, this is the kind of feedback we're getting from residents. We haven't gotten, I haven't gotten personally any negative feedback about anybody who has any deals with the city as of yet. I'm saying it won't happen in the future, but I think it's a good example that we're setting at the beginning and I want to also let you please convey to the staff that I appreciate their efforts of being customer service oriented because that's what it's all about, is being, the taxpayers are the customers of the city and we have to treat them with that level of respect, so.
Well, I appreciate those comments and the staff is working hard all day long and looking for ways to save costs and I'll certainly pass that on to them and I appreciate you taking note of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments about that realm at all?
I was just going to say that two of our members of the ZDA who were unable to be here earlier are acting after one because she's going to be...
Okay, poor self from the ZDA, and Tim Emma who would be the chair. If I'll stick around, I'll square all in before you leave. If that's all right, you can do that, right? All right, any other comments? Bates is, he's a part of the communication string, he's always reminded me of this because I forget it sometime. Please go to our website or when you get an email from the city, please go to our website and sign up for the city email list. We've got a sanitation survey on the website. Again, I'll bring this up, we talked about the town hall, the town hall. DeKalb County is considering changing the schedule and the fee for which you are paying for sanitation services. Presently you have four days of grounds pickup, two being your regular trash days. The county is considering going to one day per week, cutting that in half and keeping the fee at $265 a year, or if you want to keep the second day, you, it will be charging $305 a year. And that's supposed to, one of the great things about our city is that they're going to have to ask us if we want to do that and that's important. That's one of the benefits of being in the municipality. There have been other things that the county's been asking us about when it comes to some legislative issues that they didn't have to ask us before. And so those are some of the benefits that we're already seeing. The county is asking us for permission to do certain things and asking our opinion on some things and I think that's very important. So please go to the website, get your email locked in there, we're writing this panel, I think we email once a week and if there's an emergency, is that right, once a week? And if there's some sort of emergency, you'll get, you'll get an alert there, but we're not going to be spamming you. Please go, put your email address into our city website, take the sanitation survey as well. We'd like to hear from you, what's your thoughts on that, on that possible change. Okay, no executive session. Is there a motion for a term?
I still move.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor of a term? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.